I think Ms. Donna is going to be here shortly, but we'll go ahead and get started. All right. Turn it over to you, City Manager.
Thank you. Tonight, we have got some, we're going to meet with the Library Board, the Mayville-C Frye Library Board. I don't know who it is that's representing. She's got quite a few board members here, so, Ms. Wells?
Hello. Good evening. My name is Leigh Wells. I'm the Chair this year. We also have an attendance, let's see. Behind me is Jeannie Riggs, Marguerite Albrecht, and Sue Kilmer. And I, the others may slip in. The Mayville-C Frye Library Board's meetings are held quarterly in January, April, July, and October, on the third Wednesday at four, and if any of you would ever like to visit, we'd love to have you. The COVID-19 virus forced significant changes in our library, just like every place else in the world. And after closing in March, they redesigned their service model from in-person to virtual. They began accepting online library card applications, and that's worked so well, they're going to continue that. Virtual programming was begun on the library's Facebook page, and it will be in place until the fall schedule. The librarians have received several grants, but two of them specifically were to get digital programming, headphones, backdrops, and the lighting they needed for programming. Our first in-person contact with patrons, of course, was curbside. And then on May 18th of 2020, the library opened it for a limit of 25 patrons at a time, from 12 to four, and they have gradually increased the hours until their regular hours now. In July 2020 is when they were fully implementing regular hours. And I want to note, I want to note that the Metropolitan System that services Oklahoma City and Edmond have just before you had to make an appointment if you want to go in any library. And they just now have started having access in April to their libraries. And now they call it a sit-and-stay policy. Our staff continues to wear masks when they service the public, because different public individuals have different needs. And with the CDC's latest guidelines on COVID-19 transmission on surfaces, as of May 1st, they just continue quarantining return materials, and they've returned to indoor book returns as well as book returns outside. The materials are still cleaned as they were before COVID, and they still are following the social distancing guidelines. They've reintroduced two computers and two iPads in the children's area. Summer Reading this summer will be Tales and Tales, two different words spelled differently, but sound the same. All youth programming will be virtual, and they've added a new app for tracking how many are participating in summer reading. And this is called Read Squared. And then they've also purchased a virtual programming package called Page Turners for elementary-age participants. And registration for that starts June 1st. I think a real point of pride for our staff is that we have seven full-time and five part-time workers. If you want to congratulate two of the workers, Stephanie Ogle and Shawna Deeds have finished their master's degree this spring, and so now we have six staff members with their master's degree, which is, I think, impressive for our town. We received a number of grants during the pandemic, and I can say, over the years since the city has taken over UConn Libraries, UConn Public Library, and the grants they have received is why our city has so many different services. But they received the Hope Grant from Oklahoma City Humanities Council for $20,000, Digital Inclusion Grant, so that students who were trying to use, do, did not have Wi-Fi or very poor Wi-Fi at home, they were out there trying to get as close as they could to the library to use it. So now they can also use it in the parking lot and just to the left of the building. They received a PPE grant, and a WHIP Cam headphone grant, and a Health Literacy grant. Needs that we have, that we brought to you before, and some of you are newer, so please listen. We do need more space for materials. We really need more space for programming. It really curves what our library can do for our population with not being able to do the programming that we want to do. And we need more parking. And I will address this because I've addressed it with City Council before, but we were told that it would cost very little to put something down so people could drive over and park in the grass to the right of the library, as long as weather permits. And especially during times when we had programming for seniors and in the library, if you drive by there, it will, the parking lot's full, and there's not one space to park in. And times when we have things like Chocolate Festival, we could have vendors and the workers park in the grass, who are going to be there all day. And then we would not see adults and children parking across the street and trying to run across the street to get to things like the Chocolate Festival or different activities that the city holds in those two buildings. So, that's my comments for tonight, unless you have any questions for us.
I just want to say I'm always impressed with your numbers, the amount of people that you serve. What you guys accomplished during COVID and all of our regulations was amazing. I, you know, you kept it safe, but you kept it people-reading, and I love that. Thank you.
Thank you, because we all know because of research that the most important thing for all children is to read and be read to, even as they grow. Then they will establish listening skills, and of course, Mr. Wooton can tell you how important that is.
Anybody else have anything? Thank you, and thank you to everybody that's on your board, and you do an amazing job, Sue. I appreciate you all so much. Okay.
Okay, thank you. I would like to now give the City Council and the public a current city projects update. First of all, I handed, gave everyone a handout, and this is also on the Internet on our website. The bid has been let for the Garth Brooks Trail. Construction will begin early summer. The Frisco-I-40 interchange, they are moving at full speed ahead. It should be done by August and possibly before. State Highway 4 Phase 1, they are just doing the cleanup work on that now. It is virtually complete. They are, we've started working on the utility relocation, the water and the sewer line for State Highway 4 Phase 2. We are looking, we have to have that done by July. They will let the bid in November, and construction will start after the 1st of the year for Phase 2. We have the Garth Brooks Boulevard traffic improvements that we have made, and today they were finishing up some striping.
That's, I wondered what that was as I came here, and there was all that traffic.
Yes, they, but it, from what I have heard and what I've witnessed, the traffic moves along much better than it has in the past, so.
It does.
We still would like to bring to you at our next meeting the traffic, the smart grid, to make them move a lot smoother, to be placed at every intersection there from, I believe it's Vandement to 10th Street. So we'll be bringing that to you at the next City Council meeting.
I had something happen the other day. I made it from 10th to Vandement in like 45 seconds.
That's a miracle.
That is. You must be living right.
It was a good day.
Yeah.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I have a question about the Garth Brooks Trail.
Yes, sir.
Do we have a predicted finish date?
Michelle, have you? No. No.
Is there any way to guesstimate that without, I'm just concerned about the check pass, which is virtually blocked open.
Well, yeah, normally they are about eight-to-10-month project. This depends on the timing when they get and release, ODOP releases them to start the project. We have not had a pre-work session with them, so they're not giving us a start and end date. So, once we do have the pre-work session, we'll have that start and end date for you.
Have we communicated with the people that do the parade and all that?
We have not yet.
Is it going to affect the flow of traffic?
It's actually going to be along the side of the road, and yes, when they're working along there, they'll be blocking one lane that'll be going northbound.
They could line up north of Main Street.
Well, we'll, when we know that, we will actually work with the checks to make sure, you know, everybody knows what's going on, and that we keep everybody safe and that they can stage like they need to too, so we'll work with them.
So we definitely want the check parade this year. Okay, next.
That's all. The next item on our, is the Performator presentation by Frank Crawford.
Thank you, guys, for making some time for me in the workshop. I know this is everybody's favorite subject, municipal accounting, so, that's a joke. It's not really everybody's favorite subject. It's my favorite subject, though, so.
Rick loves it.
Okay, well, good, then, then he's going to love this one, so. I'm Frank Crawford with Crawford and Associates. We kind of help the city throughout the year with its financial reporting requirements, and at the end of the year, during the audit phase, try to help prepare this 84-page document that ends up being audited. Once that gets out, the audit, which you'll hear tonight from the auditor, they issued basically clean opinions on everything, meaning that all the numbers in here are right, and that they're all materially correct, and they had no problems with the audit. What it doesn't do a very good job of, is explaining what they mean. It's 84 pages of brutal reading, if you're not an accountant. And so, that's why we've historically created this thing, which is way easier to read, and tries to take the audited financial statements and reduce it down into a very simple concept that you could answer if a citizen were to come to you and say, you know, financially, as a city, how are we doing on a scale of 1 to 10? Everybody understands that scale, 10 being excellent financial health and success, and a 1 or a 0 being poor financial health and success. So we started this for a lot of cities about 20 years ago. Here, I think we started it about eight years ago, where we've been tracking what the overall score is, and it's now done basically analytically. In other words, I watch what happens to the numbers. I develop a series of key ratios, and then we basically score them on a benchmark, on a scale, where I can actually employ this not only statewide to compare to other governments similar to you, but also nationally, and it's actually used by 12 international governments. So it's kind of taken a bit of a life of its own, but it was actually designed for places like here, where I could simply just reduce your financial health and success into a single score. And so, we had to create a name for it, the Performator. We just made that up. That's not a real word. Well, I guess it is now because we actually copyrighted it, so it actually is a word. And so basically, that's what we end up doing, is scoring on a scale of 0 to 10 the financial health and success or failure of a city. So it's a kind of a combined overall score, where we look at not only your health, like at a point in time. In this case, it's June 30, 2020. We look at a health score. We look at a performance score, and then we look at a sustainability factor. In other words, can we continue this? And then we kind of blend all of them together to give you your overall score. So, I'm going to not go through this entire 20-page document, but I'm going to take you through a couple of pages and then let you ask questions that you might have. Let's flip to page 5, which is kind of the overall score, where you can actually see what's happened over the last eight years, from our highs and our lows. On that scale of 0 to 10, we were pretty much below a 5 in fiscal '15, maybe probably the culmination of several really not great years, financial health-wise. And then things changed, starting in '16, new administration, new rules, new, new attention to these numbers. And as you can see, what's happened to that score since that point in time has now grown to basically the highest score that we've got over the years. Now, perspective, in the history of this, which I've been doing for 22 years now, I've only had somebody score the 9s once, and it was only a 9.1. So, it's basically impossible to score a 10, and it's almost impossible to score a 0, although the Puerto Rican government is testing my 0 theory. They're not in very good shape. They're only, the only government I've ever seen that scores less than a 1, which is literally impossible, but yet they've done it. So, a 9.1 kind of gives you a little perspective. It's only happened once in 20 years, and it's from a municipality similar years in Georgia, actually, that uses this model. Here in Oklahoma, we've probably seen for the comparable governments to you, you know, metro area cities, Broken Arrow, Wasso, you know, in Tulsa area, Edmond, Yukon, El Reno, for the rest of us, kind of right smack at the mid-range. I've got a couple of governments that are scoring in the low 8s, but I've also got several governments in the low to mid-sixes. So, I would say the 7.4 is a really good score, and it's the highest score that we've had. And more importantly, it's the stair-step up of recovering our health and our performance after several years of stair-stepping down prior to 2015. So, the rest of these pages are literally full of the one-page-per-ratio that I look at to kind of give you an idea of what, some of the things that we look at. The way to read this report is very simple. Every page looks literally the same. There's a pie chart or a graph on the left of the page. There's narrative or a text, but not a whole lot of words and not a whole lot of numbers on the right. And then some people don't like either one of those, and they go straight to the red, yellow, and green speedometer that's in the corner, which kind of gives you a perspective of where you are, not only overall, but also on the ratios. So, a couple of things I'll point out on a handful of slides, and then, I don't know how much time you wanted to spend with this, but I'll be more than happy to talk as long as you want. Page 7 is kind of a reflection of what I call our net worth, our overall net worth. It's what we call the level of unrestricted net position, or in our case, it's a net position deficit. Now, when I say the word deficit, everybody thinks, oh, wait, that's weird. All that really means is, right now, the number of liabilities that we've got recorded are greater than our assets. And you might say, well, how can that possibly be? Well, back in 2015, which is where you can see in the chart on the left, prior to that, we actually had a positive unrestricted debt position, and then all of a sudden, in 2015, it drops dramatically. Well, 2015 was the first year where a really significant accounting change took place in the rules. It wasn't anything that happened to you, per se, as it was that the state pension systems that are unfunded, in your case, mostly the FIRE pension system, the cities that contribute to the state's plan were required to record their proportionate share of that liability, even though it isn't really your liability. It's the state pension system's liability. Since you're the contributing entity to it, or one of several, you take a proportionate share. Well, your proportionate share of that liability is about $11 million. So, if we're in a $4.7 million deficit, it's actually a $7 million net position positive if I were to remove that liability that's not there, but the accounting rules don't allow us to do that. So, what happened in 2015 is we recognized that liability, and then we've kind of been chipping it away as we've had good years where we bring in more money than we spend. That kind of chips away at that deficit. So, ultimately, we're now at the lowest point of that unrestricted net position deficit over the last eight years. And I think that probably within the next couple of years, even with that FIRE pension liability there, we're going to post a positive net position. So, again, just an accounting issue that I wanted to kind of bring out. Something that's probably a little bit more understandable would be the one on page 8, which is the general funds, which is kind of the city's main operating fund. And we call fund balance the amount of the carryover every year. And then a portion of that carryover, we keep there because we want to hold it in case of an emergency or a one-time need, or something we maybe should have budgeted, but we didn't, and now the expenditure came up. And so, we are at about 22%, 23% of our annual revenue stream in a reserve capacity, which basically means we could operate the general fund for about 23% of the year without collecting a penny and still pay out all of our expense. Now, of course, we wouldn't want that to occur, because then we'd be left with nothing. But the beauty of this is, is that as the city's been building this unassigned fund balance of its general fund, we've also been able to reestablish our emergency reserves, where we've actually got another $5 million set aside for really catastrophic stuff. And we can't really touch that stuff without something catastrophic occurring, and it would actually involve an action taken by you guys before that money could be touched. The city can use the fund balance that we see here, the 23% from year to year, to help balance the budget or to do one-time expenditures, but we shouldn't ever be touching that emergency reserve. But we had basically depleted that emergency reserve, maybe it was at 15, gosh, it seems so long ago now. The emergency reserve was gone. We had literally ate it all up inadvertently or advertently, either one. And so we had to start a process where we had to reestablish that, or the city had to reestablish it. So not only have they reestablished their operating reserves, they've reestablished the catastrophic reserves also. So, I mean, that's just very good. If I were to take that catastrophic reserve and add it into this equation, that 23% would jump to 52%, literally meaning we could operate half the year and not collect a dime and still be able to pay out all the expense. So, a very positive ratio, and again, that's kind of why we score as well as we do. Now, one thing I didn't say that I probably should clarify, back on page 5, when I told you that you scored an overall 7.4, I can actually divide the score up into three factors. Health, performance, and sustainability. We call it position, performance, and capability. It means the same thing. Our financial position, our health factor, is the 6.1. That's part of our 7.4 score. Those first seven or eight slides that you see, including the two we just talked about, they are part of our position score. And so when you get to, let's say, the end of those first seven or eight position and health factors, there's a summary on page 15, where you can actually see the last five or six years of each one of those individual scores and how they've kind of improved over time. So you can see that although, as far as health score is concerned, we score a 6.1, we were down health-wise at about a 1.8, I'm sorry, a 1.2 and a 1.5 in '14 and '15. So, you can see how far we've had to climb from where we were in 2014, 2015, where we were at the, basically, the most unhealthy financial position that the city's been in in quite some time. So, the 6.1, again, anything above a 5 is what I consider to be satisfactory. So, a 6.1 from where we were four or five years ago is fairly impressive. The next set of ratios that start on page 16 and 17 are the six-or-so performance scores. And so, again, since we scored a overall 7.4, and we scored a 6.1 on the first set of ratios for the health, we actually have extremely good scores on the performance, a 9.2. So, basically, as you look at those speedometers on the next six-or-so slides, starting on page 17, they're mostly maxed out at the green, because those are where you're basically, your good score was this year, extremely good score. The only way that we were able to dig out of a position of unhealthy financial condition was that we had, we stringed together years of good performance. It's almost just like health. You could be very sick at one point in time, and then change your diet, do things differently, and your health improves over the next several years. That's kind of what has happened with the city. So, a number of different slides in these six or seven that have something to do with basically how we performed this year, but we nearly scored a perfect 10 on those six or seven ratios. We even eked out about a 1.4% sales tax gain, looking at page 21, for the year. And that was completely going to be guesswork if you'd have asked me last year what was going to happen, because once the pandemic hit, all bets were off the table of whether sales tax was going to crater or whether people were going to stay local and shop local and buy local, and kind of seemed that for most of the communities, that stay-at-home meant buy-at-home also. And so, we were actually able to eke out a little bit of a sales tax increase. And it looks like that has continued on past June 30 of 20 for most of the months. But again, sales tax, any sales tax growth during the pandemic was great, and use tax growth also. So on page 22, you see the summary of those performance slides for the last six or seven years. And you can kind of see that in the years where we weren't scoring very much, very well-healthy, you know, we were down in the lower sevens as far as performance. But in the years where we see the score climbing, we're consistently scoring basically in the 9s. So, it's not rocket science at the end of the day. I mean, it's, it's just math. But no one had ever really kind of put this together for a government when we did this about 20 years ago, so it's kind of now became the de facto standard that governments measure themselves by. The last set of ratios, the capability ratios, which I also refer to as sustainability. This score won't change very much from year to year unless you do something fairly drastic, maybe raise the sales tax rate by a penny, issue several million dollars of bonded debt or revenue bond debt. In other words, this is basically the sustainability factor, where we try to measure, can we keep this thing going? Can we sustain this? And so, at our, at our sustainability ratio, we score a 6.3, so again, somewhere in the mid-sixes. And that number doesn't change very much, and you can kind of see the summary of those scores on page 29, I'm sorry, page 30, so much for my 20-page document. On page 30, you can kind of see the capability or sustainability ratios that haven't really changed over a period of time, because, you know, we don't just double our debt load in one year, or we don't just double our sales tax rate. Anytime we do something like that, it's fairly gradual. So, we're kind of in the mid-sixes as far as sustainability. Again, okay, above satisfactory. But ultimately, as we pay off debt and more, our population rises, you'll see these statistics go down typically. Now, when you start issuing more debt, or you start losing population, then you see that the capability is not quite so good. So, we're kind of right where we probably So we're kind of right where we probably need to be, right around the lower to mid-sixes as far as that is concerned. So when you average all these things together, that produces our seven-four. If you've got a calculator and you were quickly trying to do an average of these three scores, you're gonna see it may not come out exactly to seven-point-four, because these are weighted. Some of these ratios are more important than other ones, some have a weight of three, some have a weight of two, and then some have a weight of one, just so that we don't double up the effect of a single transaction or something like that, we actually spread it. So a lot of thought went into this thing when it was created, but it was really just designed for us to have an ability to answer that simple question. We just didn't want to make the score up anymore, we wanted to actually make it analytical. And so it has taken off quite a bit more than what we had planned, so now it's standard and we kind of do it for everybody that wants one done. So that's it. I'll answer any questions that you have about any specific ratio or any particular issue.
Well, I want to, first of all, thank you for making it so clear for us, and it shows that we're at seven-point-four and we've got a great, great year, and hopefully next year will be even greater. But you heard the ladies already talking, just before you, talking about a new library. We've got folks in here looking at wanting to fix some streets in Des Moines. Now, we had a gentleman here two weeks ago talking about general obligation bonds, and that we don't follow other cities, ours is different than other cities, and right away, I said, well, why aren't we following what other cities are doing? Why don't we have the same income?
No. You know, the general obligation bond issue is very unique to Oklahoma, actually. It's Oklahoma municipal governments are not allowed to levy a property tax for operational purposes. The only way we're allowed to levy a property tax as the city is that voters have to approve a general obligation bond debt, and then by doing that, by approving the debt, they also basically approve a property tax on them that can only be levied for the amount of the debt service to pay that debt off. Basically, counties are where the sales tax is really, counties and schools use the sales tax, I'm sorry, property tax, and then sales tax is used by the city, and usually, they don't try to infringe on one another, although many counties have infringed on the sales tax side by, you know, levying their own sales tax. But we're forbidden by constitution, by law. No other community in the United States is forbidden to do that, except Oklahoma municipalities. So if I'm in Jackson, Mississippi, and I'm trying to balance the budget, and I'm a little bit short, I'll just raise the property tax levy the amount I need to balance the budget. Can't do that here. We only have that avenue to go to the property tax if we have a GEO bond issue, or if we've been sued and a judgment has been rendered against us, we can pass that onto the property tax rolls. Now, what some communities have done is, after they get their first general obligation bond issue passed, let's say a twenty-million-dollar street issue, when that expires fifteen years down the road, they get very clever and they do a marketing campaign in the fourteenth year where they say, look, we want to issue another twenty million dollars of debt to build new streets, but it's not gonna change your property tax levy at all, it's just gonna replace the debt that's rolling off. In other words, it doesn't impact anyone. If you approach it in that manner, it's usually a much more sellable idea, but the hardest part is to sell your first GEO debt, in other words, where you haven't been accustomed to levying a property tax for that debt service. You know, it's kind of a marketing campaign, for the lack of a better word, that you'd have to go through and sell the bond issue to the voters, whether it's streets or water or whatever else you want to do. So some communities around you and other communities in the state have done that. They've historically had GEO bond issues that expire, and then they'll issue a new one to kind of roll on top of it as the other one rolls off, but it's getting that first one. Now, as far as the Performator score, the Performator actually would reward you for doing some of this stuff. In other words, if you've already got a very low tax burden on your residents, you could actually raise the tax burden or the debt burden on your residents, still score a ten, and then get twenty million dollars of new streets, which would raise another score. So in other words, if you borrow money and you invest that money in an infrastructure, technically, you haven't done anything financially. You've still got the same balance sheet, you just traded one asset for another. And so you can't really trick the Performator, it's gonna reward you for doing certain things like that. You just have to basically manage what you're doing to basically say, look, if we're already capped out or we're close to our limit on debt issuances, we certainly don't want to issue debt up to the limit, because we'll lose capability and we have to start making payments, we have to pay that debt off. If you've got a low debt burden on your per capita right now, you have room to exercise your debt, your capability score might go down, but your capital asset score might go up, because now you have twenty million dollars of roads. So, you know, the Performator will take into effect all of the different combinations that go on, but ultimately, if you're just borrowing money and investing it in yourselves in infrastructure, you're really not changing the score financial health-wise, you're just trading one thing for another.
Our best bet is to pass the word on to our residents in my ward, who have been asking for better roads, that hey, the better thing to do is the general operation bond, and I'm gonna try to get the ladies from the library to back me up, because they're in my ward.
That is certainly one alternative, the GEO bonds. The other alternative is to go back to the voters and ask for a fraction or a component of a penny sales tax for them to approve, with that extra component dedicated solely towards street improvements. If you go to any lender, you know, a creditor would basically say, look, if you're gonna pledge that dedicated sales tax to pay the debt service, I'll loan you the money to do streets. In other words, you could still get twenty million dollars, but you might do it through a different loan package from a creditor, you just have to figure out how you're gonna pay it back, whether it's a property tax levy or whether it's a sales tax levy. I kind of like the property tax levy, just from the standpoint that it opens us up to a stream of revenue that we normally don't have access to.
That's right.
So if the citizens voted, then they've basically voted to, look, I'm gonna be driving on these roads and these streets, I want to benefit from it, I don't mind paying a little bit of property tax in order to have better roads or better streets. And so that way, it doesn't use any other money of the city, no general fund money, no capital money, you're literally just levying a property tax, just enough to pay that debt service, not enough to keep anything, not enough to stack cash, to reimburse anything, it's literally just enough to pay off that debt service. So that'd be a great, a great way to do it, but you're gonna have to market, whichever route you choose, you're gonna have to market it, you're gonna have to get the voters behind it, otherwise, you're not gonna have much of a chance.
I appreciate it.
Goodbye.
I have a question on the capital asset condition.
Sure.
I'm gonna, there's several pieces in my question, I'm gonna try to narrow it down.
Okay.
If I can articulate it. So on the percentage of like the twenty-twenty, thirty-nine percent.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a number that you've seen over the years to where you don't want to hit that number, because at that point, the wheels just start falling off? And if, well, I mean, maybe literally, but also at certain speed.
You know, yes, actually, probably about twenty-five percent is when you're gonna start really having problems. When you have twenty-five percent of your life left in your assets, what that means is, you've accelerated or depreciated those assets to the point where now, you need to replace seventy-five percent of their capacity, and you may not have seventy-five percent of the dollars in which you need to do that. Typically, what the model does here is, it tries to say, we ought to try to stay around, to be satisfactory, we ought to try to stay around half, about fifty percent. In other words, that we spend about as much money as we do, we spend, once we get to fifty percent, that we spend as much on new stuff to replace the old stuff as we do lose depreciation expense on some of the old stuff. Now, in this number, though, are millions of dollars of infrastructure, roads, bridges, drainage systems, water lines, sewer lines, water towers. In other words, this is a collective number, it isn't just equipment, like rolling stock. It's dominated probably by roads and buildings and really big-time dollar infrastructure, which, you know, basically, your roadway system, you know, however many miles of roads you have and the asphalt or concrete substance of those roads, that's where a lot of your infrastructure and cost capital is. So the way to manipulate this number, the way to move this number and get it back to above fifty percent, is basically you're gonna have to borrow money in order to have some large-scale improvements. Otherwise, you're just chipping away at a block, you know, a block here, a block there. I don't have to talk to you guys about how expensive it is just to do one block of roads, it's incredibly expensive. So to make significant change to this, if the bulk of the assets in this are infrastructure related to roadways, then we've got to spend some major dollars on either water sewer infrastructure or street infrastructure in order to affect this. And the only way you really do that is via some kind of debt typically. So I don't know if that answers your question, but...
Yeah, it does.
We have probably let our capital assets overall decline to the point where I would say, I would like to get that number back up, but, I mean, it's functional at thirty-nine, forty percent, but you're always gonna be playing catch-up for a while, until you get caught up, and then, once you get to about fifty percent, you try every year to at least replace as much as you're depreciating it off in replacement.
Where do you see, what's our biggest area of concern?
I would say, I'll just have to quickly look, you know, anywhere, any of the charts where we have the speedometer in the red is probably our biggest concern. I mentioned the one on page seven, which is really the result of the firefighter liability, so that one doesn't really concern me. I think your capital asset condition, the thirty-nine percent is a little bit low, I would prefer that to be at fifty percent. Your non-uniform pension system is funded at eighty-four percent. I scored as zero, because I want it to be in the nineties at a minimum, I want ninety percent funding rolling forward, but we're slowly, as you can see the chart on page ten, we're slowly gaining a percent or two each year in funding that plan. Pension systems are, they're animals that fund themselves over a long period of time, so you can't really look at big changes from year to year, you just have to look at funding that pension system over a period of time. If you contribute a hundred percent of what your actuary says you should contribute into the system, and the system invests based on their rules, and the market doesn't tank prolonged over a twenty or twenty-five-year career, it can't not work. In other words, it has to work. Ultimately, it'll work, because we'll either kick in more contributions, or they'll start investing in more risk-reward-type assets, which, again, on a short term is not great, but maybe on the long term would be. So I would probably say capital assets more than anything from a long-term problem. Your cash flows are great, I mean, your debt service load is good, meaning that you don't budget a lot of your operating money to pay off debt service, so your debt service loads aren't very large. I would probably say that out of everything, the one thing I would probably try to focus on might be the capital asset side, and again, you probably can't focus on that so much without doing some really, really big-time stuff to affect that percentage, streets, water, sewer-type infrastructure. So that's probably the best I'd give you there.
Anyone else? All right, thank you so much.
Oh, no worries, I appreciate it. I will not be near as long during the actual council meeting. I'll just pick a couple of pages and go from there, unless you want me to, and then I will, so doesn't matter.
Very interesting.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll adjourn and be back here at seven o'clock.